All right, good morning, everybody. It is the morning of May 26th. We are here for the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Washoe County. We hope everybody had a safe and secure Memorial Day weekend. And with that, Mr. Manager, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I want to tell you, obviously, as we continue to move through this, we are still, obviously, in Phase One here in our COVID-19 pandemic response. We want to make sure everybody and thank everybody for joining us digitally via Zoom. We do not have anybody in chambers. Our chambers are still closed until otherwise known, and we have individuals join us via phone. So with that, I will ask Madam Clerk, will you give us a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marsha Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung via telephone.
Present.
Von Hartung via telephone.
Yes.
G D Herman.
Here.
Eric County Manager, Eric Brown. Assistant District Attorney, David Watts Vial via telephone or Zoom.
I'm Nancy Perrin, County Clerk. You have a corner, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it. All right, we are on to public comment this morning. And, Mr. Manager, Item Three.
Yes, Item Three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items and comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that will be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments this morning?
I have not received any voic-- any emails, and there's no one in the room to comment. And I don't know if we have anybody via Zoom.
Do we have anybody via Zoom?
No.
All right, seeing no public comment, we always wait just a second because it does take a few minutes. Being no Zoom, okay. All right, so no Zoom, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, Item Four, please.
Item Four is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information for topics for future agendas.
All right. And so I'm going to make a couple of adjustments to the agenda this morning. We do have to pull Items 18 and 19 this morning from the agenda, being that they-- due to some challenges that need to be corrected prior to them being heard by the commission. So Items 18 and 19 will be pulled. All right. And then that-- with that, Mr. Manager, do you have any announcements for us this morning?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Number one, as you know, next week, well, our next commission meeting will be in two weeks because of the elections on June 8th. So on June 16th, we do plan, staff plans to provide an update on Lemon Valley. This is something that's been a long time in the making and with COVID and agenda adjustments, but I just wanted to point that out. Secondly, next Monday on June 1st, we will begin reopening the Washoe County offices. And as all of you know, the county has continued to conduct business during the COVID-19 crisis. I want to thank and acknowledge the county employees who, on very short order, were very quick to embrace working from home, teleworking where possible and appropriate. We have many departments that are public facing that have continued to conduct business on modified operations so as to keep their employees safe. We all await the governor's announcements later today, but our plan is that, starting Monday, June 1st, the county will begin transitioning employees back into the office. I will note that we will continue to embrace teleworking wherever possible. I think we found across many departments that allowing our employees to work from home under the cer-- under the appropriate conditions can be very productive, and we will continue to do so even post-COVID-19. But we're looking forward to transitioning, beginning to transition our employees back into the offices on a face basis. And of course, we will be observing social distancing. We will be wearing masks particularly in-- particularly in instances where social distancing in the workplace is not possible. We will be requiring all visitors to wear masks, and we will also be providing temperature scans. So we look forward to that. The last thing that I wanted to mention is that on the agenda today, we have the folks from Waste Management. I do want to remind the commissioners that, at your request, this office, I did send a letter to Waste Management dated April 10th, about a week after they announced intentions for a rate increase, asking them to delay the rate increase, given the COVID-19 situation and given the fact that many of our Washoe County citizens were seeing a reduction in services as a result of modified operations by Waste Management. So as they address us this morning, I'm very anxious to hear what they have to say in terms of what are the things going forward that we can do to make things better for our county constituents. That's it, Mr. Chair, for my comments this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Appreciate it. Commissioners, do we have anybody signed in? Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to remind everybody in the audience that isn't there, but they're at home because of everything that's happening. But I just wanted to make-- assure them that what our mission is and our core values and how we are set up to create a safe and secure and healthy community. And so our mission is working together regionally to promote and sustain a safe, secure, and healthy community. And then we have integrity, effective communication, quality public service. And they're elaborated here. And then vulnerable populations. Identify and triage the most vulnerable population as identified by community need and working-- work together cross-departamentally and regionally to provide adequate resources and support. So I just wanted to state that. And then, just before I left home this morning, somebody called me and I had to stop and talk to him for a while. And they said, "Have you noticed some of the items that are on the agenda today that are very big-money issues?" And it's about the stem morphing, the water reclamation, and all that. And it's over 16 million. And then they said, "And what they're using for a figure for trying to maintain Swan Lake, 15,000." So I promised I'd say that in public today and put that on the record. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hartung, I have you signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Perhaps the manager can clarify, when we start reopening our offices, will that include the chamber as well, or will the chamber remain closed? Again, based on the governor's recommendations, I know that issues or businesses or places of congregation have been kept closed, but hopefully we'll hear more about that this afternoon. And so I don't know whether there is a plan or how we're going to approach that, and I certainly look forward to reopening the chambers. And then the second item that I have is perhaps we can just have a short item with respect to the Health Department. And I've received a number of calls in terms of some-- people are frustrated with the way that some of the things have been handled with respect to the Health Department, testing and some other things. And just the hierarchy of the Health Department, even though it says Washoe County, and the fact that really the county commission does not have purview over the Health Department. So perhaps we can have just a discussion on that purview. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. All right, and next I have Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just very briefly wanted to take the opportunity to shout out one of our Health District employees who does environmental health services, which they go around and check restaurants for their annual inspection. And this gentleman by the name of Scott Stickler was at Compo, and he was a total gentleman. And I actually received three phone calls from people there thanking us for sending someone who was so knowledgeable about the issues and was so gracious to everybody who was there. And I thought, with all that's going on right now, a kudo to the Health District might be a beneficial thing. So, thank you, Scott.
All right. All right, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of related additions from what Commissioner Herman said and Commissioner Hartung. But first, I want to announce that the governor's address is today at 5:30 PM on all your local news channels. I'm sure it's on some social media. But everybody be aware that at 5:30 today, we will know a whole lot more than we know right now. And to really frame that up in talking about the Board of Health, although it's called Washoe County, we don't do anything without the governor's approval. We are a-- we are not a home-rule county and a home-rule state, and that is the way our constitution is written. If you want to change that, we can do that, too. I'd love to hear from constituents. So that's that, 5:30 today. And then the other one is the expenses that are on this agenda. When we get to them, I'm going to need to know from staff, are those expenses already figured in this fiscal year budget? Or are they considered to be paid out of next fiscal year budget? And if that-- if they are for next fiscal year budget, I think we need to make a consideration to pull them all and see if these are contracts that we can renegotiate or put off until a later date. And I don't care what funding source it comes from, because with the emergency that we're in, we're probably going to be allowed either to have our funding sources swept or we're going to be allowed to unbracket those funding sources to be used for other emergency items. So that's my issue about the agenda items coming up as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I hope everybody had a wonderful and safe Memorial Day weekend. I think it prudent to say that many oftentimes, many people forget the purpose of Memorial Day. And first, I want to thank all of those that have served in the armed forces and those that have given the ultimate sacrifice. We spend this weekend usually, or yesterday, celebrating those who have put in the time and made that sacrifice for our country and for our freedoms. There's many reasons why we can sit here today and operate as a government, operate as a society, and it's because of those individuals. So I want to make sure that we give them the kudos and support and thanks to those families and the condolences to those families that have made that ultimate sacrifice. Secondly, I do want to echo what all of the commissioners, you know, to this afternoon. The governor will come out with his recommendations, as we heard on Friday, in his press announcement this afternoon, in regards to what the-- when we would move into Phase Two and what that would look like, and hopefully the dates, the opening dates of the casinos on June 4th. But while we continue to do that, I want to reassure, and Commissioner Herman is right, that we do-- we strive to provide safe, secure, and healthy communities. And when we do that, we need to continue to not be less vigilant. This weekend, I did go to the grocery store and a number of places. We're abiding by the recommendations of face coverings, and look, we're not saying it's mandatory. What we're saying is that you should be doing it for those around you. You should be doing it for the vulnerable populations that maybe can't protect themselves. You shouldn't be-- you should be doing it for the family and maybe the kids. You should do it for a number of different reasons. However, it is prudent that we continue to work together to take care of each other. And right now, to be less vigilant, just because it's summer or you feel like you need to get out or you've been cooped up for eight weeks, is not a time to kind of give up. And I appreciate that this is challenging for a lot of people and it's an inconvenience, but just if you're not going to do it, that's your own choice, and I'm not going to tell you-- I'm not going to sit in this dais and tell you to do it. What I am going to tell you is that please be cautious of those around you and be humble and nice and have some humility. I saw a lady just absolutely go ballistic on a staff member for asking her if she could be conscientious of some organ-- some skill or some directions within a store. And it was disheartening that we can't work together as a community. So I just hope everybody has that in mind as we continue to move through this. This is very challenging for still those 50 families, 50-plus families that have lost somebody during this pandemic, those that have been sick, those that this is very real for. So just be a little conscientious of that. All right, with that, I have nothing further. So we will close Item Four, Mr. Manager, and on to Item Five.
Item Five is an appearance and presentation by Greg Martinelli, Area Manager, Public Sector Solutions for Waste Management, for an update on waste management operations in Washoe County through the COVID-19 pandemic. I believe he's joining by Zoom.
All right. Mr. Martinelli, are you with us?
I am.
All right, good morning.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, commissioners, and Mr. Manager. Hope all of you and your families are doing well. Going to highlight a few things that have gone on in the past 60-plus days relative to COVID. So I put together a little slide deck-- well, I didn't put it together, Kendra put it together-- a little slide deck relative to those things. And solid waste has been deemed an essential service. And so consequently, we've got the holdout-- the whole alphabet soup of agencies to try to adhere to the guidance that they're providing. You know, we get the AdDOT, State DOT, Federal DOT to our list. We've got our union relationships that we deal with on our-- with our drivers and with our equipment operators. So there's a variety of different things that enter into the equation of how we've tried to adapt to this evolving environment. So as an essential service, we thought it was critical to make sure that we maintained our workforce and to have them concerned about whether they were going to get laid or off or not. So all of their wages and benefits have been guaranteed. They're guaranteed a 40-hour work week. We've enhanced our-- some of our benefit packages for assistance with childcare and elder care. We contract with a company that has relationships where we can have childcare for $15 a day copay on our insurance provisions in the event. And we've been very fortunate here. We've only had one employee that has contracted COVID, and he is recovering, and our medical benefits were enhanced to cover all the costs of those benefits without any impact to cost for the employee. The-- we had our recycling facility shut down for a little while because we couldn't guarantee the proper social distancing, and we've since accommodated those. Those were actually some ideas brought by our employees. They thought that using a shower curtain around their workstation would be helpful. We've kind of moved on to a more sophisticated process, but we're back to sorting recyclables here at our facility in Reno. We've had to enhance our PPE for everyone, our drivers, our employees, our transfer station workers. And even with a company the size of ours, with our buying power, it's been a challenge with the supply chain. So, but we've managed to work through it, and we're in pretty good shape as far as safety equipment for our employees. So on the services side, we've suspended our excess waste and bulky collections in order to minimize the contact that the drivers would have with anything that was outside of a container. The social distancing protocols, we've implemented processes where our drivers can check in by their tablets in their trucks as opposed to having to stand at a time clock. And so we don't have any social distance issues relative to that. Our huddles in the morning are conducted out in the open area, maintaining the six-foot spacing between the employees, and so it's worked out very well. I think something that's remarkable is our attendance has been exceptional. I mean, we've had everybody come into work, and it's been very beneficial. So in order to deal with some of the customer issues, we've suspended our late fees, finance charges, and any collection and service interruptions as a result of COVID. We're proactively reaching out to our customers, and this is more relative to the commercial customer base than it is the residential. But when all the announcements came out about 60 days ago to suspend service, everybody wanted to go to on-call. And so I immediately got in touch with Wes Ruby at the Health Department and found out what the requirements were going to be from the Health Department relative to these businesses that were closing down. And so in a lot of cases, we suspended service completely. In other cases, we dropped their service level down. If they were going multiple times a week, we just dropped it down to one time a week. In some cases, if they had, say, a four-yard service, we reduced it down to a two-yard service, charged them for the two-yard service, and-- but we left the container in place because we just don't have the manpower or the inventory in order to go switch out all those containers. Bear with me here, I got something on my screen that I need to get out of the way. And I think probably most importantly is that the Health Department required that if the business was going to completely shut down after the last employee left, they wanted us to service the business one more time to ensure that there was no solid waste in the container. So that is now starting to ramp back up, which is a good thing, but it's going to be a work in progress because I don't believe that businesses are going to get back to their full capacity immediately, so we're going to have to kind of work with them in order to get them back to where they need to be. We've converted our call centers to a full work-from-home environment, and that we mobilized in about seven days. We put another 10,000 people to work, to working from home, and purchased computers and headsets and all the other things that were required to make that work-from-home environment. So as a manager indicated, we've found that in some cases, we've got more efficiency in a work-in-home environment, and I imagine some of that will continue after this is all behind us. We've recently enhanced a cell phone application at MyWM that allows for the ability for the customer to go in and look and see when their recycling day was or other minor situations that generally would require a phone call. This slide pretty much just talks a little bit about how information is available, where people can go to get information, and the things that we've been doing with the Washoe County's Joint Instant Management Center, providing them the feedback and information that's necessary in case they get any calls for things having to do with solid waste. From the most part, we've had very positive feedback from our employees. They're grateful that our drivers are coming to work every day and providing this essential service in spite of the risk it causes them or their families. So I'm looking forward to Kevin's comments when I'm finished, see what the update is on COVID. We're-- obviously, we've got our own task force that meets daily to deal with ongoing issues and develop solutions for those. And we expect those to be modified as the conditions in the environment change. We're seeing our commercial customers are starting to get back to a normal schedule, and we'll just be working with them as they come back online and adjusting their service as needed. And then the Washoe County Extra Bag Program that was suspended in May will now occur starting on Monday and run the entire month of June. So we'll get that back up and running. And that's it for me. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martinelli. I appreciate that. All right. We appreciate you coming and participating, and this is obviously an item for discussion only. Many of the commissioners have gotten questions and had concerns during the COVID pandemic, so I'm going to open it up to our commissioners at this time for the discussion and just kind of give you some feedback based upon what they've been hearing from their constituents. Now, we are not going to be able to take action on this, so there won't be any deliberation, but it will be more of feedback to you from the commission. All right, Mr. Martinelli, is that okay?
You bet.
All right. So first up, I have Vice Chair Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Martinelli. Glad to hear things are going to start gearing back up and that you are going to honor the picking the bags up starting on Monday. I just-- there's a couple of things I want to touch bases with you. Isn't it true that trash is considered-- picking up trash is considered an essential service by our governor?
Yes.
Okay, so-- and don't your employees on the trucks already all wear gloves? And you indicated you provided PPE, so you have masks for all your employees?
Yes, they've got certain PPE equipment that they're required to wear as part of their job duties, regardless of whether COVID's in place or not.
So I guess my problem with not having picked up bags, those bags included pine cones and pine needles that fell down over the winter, and they're a huge fire danger right now. And there are literally hundreds of those throughout, I'm sure, everybody's district, but certainly my district, since I cover the mountain. And I know that Incline Village, their franchise is a different franchise with IFGID. But regardless, that's a serious fire danger up there in a year where we are being told to be exceedingly careful and exceedingly watchful for fires. So I guess what I would say to you, that since you are going to start honoring the picking up the bags again on next Monday, that you please pick up any bag that's out there and get it picked up and put in. I totally appreciate that, as a company, you guys are honoring and protecting your employees. We had a fire alarm system here at the office today, and those employees who have to be here in the office were evacuated, and they were all standing out on the street, all with masks on. So we understand that as the county. We understand the importance of protecting our employees and making sure that they are following the terms necessary to protect them from COVID. But there's a lot of other business that needs to go on, and protecting this community from fire danger is one of those. So I just want to ask you a couple of questions about Incline Village. And let me put my glasses on here. If Waste Management couldn't picked up bag pine needles, is that because there was a national requirement to stop doing that? And if that policy was in place, what stopped-- what allowed Waste Management people picking up from bear boxes to get out of their truck and open the bear box? Still that potential interaction? They still have to wear PPE? They still have to have their gloves on? What's the difference there? I think that's one of the questions that I have been asked, not just by people in Incline Village, but people who live in Cullen Ranch and who live up in the mountain areas, who are accustomed to having their pine needles picked up. So could you just tell us what the difference is there?
Well, I don't-- I see the conundrum of being able to take something out of a bear shed and not pick up the pine needles on the side of the road. It was never the intent not to do that. It was just going to be delayed. And the reason that we opened up the transfer station up there so that customers could drop off their pine needles free of charge-- off their, their pine needles free of charge in lieu of the fact that we weren't picking them up at the curb yet. So, I was not intimately involved in the discussion as to why we didn't do that. So, I really can't elaborate as to what the thinking was that went into it.
Okay, thank you. I also appreciate that you opened up the transfer station up there, but unfortunately, what you didn't do, your company didn't do, was you didn't put a huge trash can out front. Now, I heard the argument when I talked to, when I called in and talked to the people on your call center. I heard the argument that the reason there wasn't a, a large trash can put out there for people to go throw their pine needles into was that they, you were afraid that people would throw anything into it. I get that. But asking people who have, who are elderly and have underlying health conditions to go into the transfer station to throw away their pine needles is not really respecting the health and concerns of the citizens. And so, that was one of the complaints I received is that I, I have an underlying health condition. I am 80. First off, it's hard for me to get my pine needles there because I have an underlying health condition and I'm 80. And, and secondly, you, they didn't put a, a dumpster outside that I can throw it in. So, I've got to go into a very dusty, very dirty area where equipment is being, is moving stuff around and that adds to the danger of my, to my health problem in addition to COVID. Now, I'm dealing with asthma or I'm dealing with some kind of allergy or a heart problem, whatever. So, I, I think, you know, I guess what I would say to you is thank you for what you did do. I wish you guys had gone further and done more because this, this whole thing wasn't just about protecting your employees or our employees here at the county, but it was about protecting our residents and our citizens and that was our job. And I don't think your company did that very effectively. And I'm glad to hear that you're going to move forward and start picking these bags up now. And I appreciate that. And I ask that you, as I said, would have your staff pick them up as quickly or as many as are out there rather than saying, well, you only get six or you only get the number that you've got a tag on. I really ask that you would make sure that this is taken care of quickly because we are very quickly moving into a very dangerous fire season and we need all those pine needles and pine cones off the ground. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Herman, I have you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Martinelli, welcome to the commission. As you remember, I voted against the contract when we had it before us. And the reasons were that the performance that had been, you know, your, your actions during the previous term were very, you know, unacceptable. And, you know, it just hasn't improved that much. I'm constantly getting calls from the citizens in District Five for the same reasons as before we voted to accept the contract. So, I, I'm just, along with all the people in my district are, are waiting to have you show us that your performance will be better because it's pretty lacking. Thank you.
Mr. Martinelli, do you have, would you like to respond?
No, I, I under, I recall Commissioner Herman's position and her reasoning behind it.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Martinelli, did Waste Management as a corporation get federal money in the last three stimulus or subsidiary of these acts?
Not that I'm aware of.
Can you confirm that for me and if they did, how much? What?
I don't believe they applied for any.
Okay, well, I need that confirmed and if they did, how much they got? And then, I want to ask you, what's a corporate's portfolio? For, for instance, how many days do they have cash flow to operate and pay bills?
I have no idea. I have no insight into the.
I need to know that, sir. I also need to know what's their investment portfolios total and how much of the money is being reinvested into, which right now is a great investment time. Can you get me that information too? So, I'm asking for, did they apply to federal money? If they did, how much did they get? What's their float is what we call that in the business of how many days they can stay open and pay bills? And the third one is what their investment portfolios look like in terms of the total and how much money is being reinvested, reinvested or put into foundations of pure cash? Because I don't want to talk about what you did wrong during the emergency, Mr. Martinelli, because I don't know who any of you guys believe in, God, Allah, Vishnu, who did I miss? Buddha? I don't know anybody that can change the past. So, the past performance, I think, had a lot to do with you've never, nobody, Waste Management has never dealt with this before, except I would argue, I believe you're in Europe. So, I think Waste Management would have had a head start than the rest. But it did move fast and furious and we also got lots of mixed messages of how, how we were going to handle this public health emergency. But I do want to talk about the future and one of the things I want to know from you in writing, if or when another infectious disease occurs in which we face similar challenges, can I see a plan of how your operations will be informed with this last and all of the complaints that you're getting about history? I need to see that in writing and that needs to be before us, before, I would say, I'd like it around the first of August, that information. And then, to get to the meat of the matter, I think my real concern is, Mr. Martinelli, while I know your, your company, just like our company, which is the taxpayers' company, had to incur many new expenses that we had never, ever anticipated before, I would argue with you that people's personal budgets are in far worse circumstances, especially in the state of Nevada that has the highest employment rate and historically the highest employment rate, higher than the depression for unemployment in one state. I would like to know, the big bottom line is why did you go ahead with the raise of the, the fees? I, and, and you never got back to us about it either. So, the raises just went automatically and my phone lit up like crazy. And honestly, Mr. Martinelli, I don't have a lot of citizens that are on this franchise. I have the city franchise. So, when mine lights up, I know who's calling me for that one. And I want, I don't think it was the right thing to do. I don't want you to do any more raises right now and I would like you to postpone it till the first of January until we can see what exactly this is doing to our customers and specifically for this Washoe County franchise. Now, I can't tell you what to do with the agreement you did with Reno or Sparks or Italy, but I can tell you right here that my citizens are very much that are, you are servicing with this franchise before COVID-19 were hanging on by their fingernails in this economic situation. And I am not happy that we didn't get a response or even a, you know, I'm going through with it and this is because that's what corporate said to do. You just raised the rates and I don't think it's right. And I do, I will want to put that out to you. I want to know how you're going to fix that too because we are in this together, but you are a corporation. We are a local government. We are a local government that uses duct tape and baling wire to put the great services and quality of life we have now. And I believe that the right thing to do, at least for this tiny part of the franchise that you have, we are not your moneymaker. I definitely know that. I think that is the right thing to do and I think it was very town deaf and it, it doesn't make me feel like we're partners at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Hartung, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Martinelli, I'm sorry that this is a beat on Waste Management fest, but I, I too got a lot of phone calls. I want to commend you guys for not removing service when there was an inability to pay. But I too agree that, that raising rates in a time like this, especially, I mean, we saw the lowest fuel prices that we've seen in a couple of decades. So, that had to translate to your bottom line. I was very disappointed that you guys went through with the rate increase when even Tomwa, who had a scheduled approved rate increase that never had to come before our board, did and, and, you know, we just deferred that. And so, I, I, I'm, I too am disappointed in that. I, I understand the cost for the additional PPE. I understand the expenditures that Waste Management made to help its, its employees telecommute. Those are the same expenditures that all businesses had to put forth. And, and so, I mean, this is a, this is an extraordinary time. And, and when I was asked about the rate increase, or when I asked rather about the rate increase, one of your employees told me that, that it had to do with the commercial service in Washoe County, the commercial service across the board and that, and that because so many businesses were closed that, that you had lost money there, but unincorporated has far less commercial service, which is why our rates are higher. So, I, I, I don't know, I don't know what the solution is at this point, but maybe we need to have a deeper conversation, commissioners, about, about what we do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Mr. Martinelli, we've had a troubled path in some of the areas in, with Waste Management. Others are operating in agreement with you have been fantastic. We try to manage that balance and I know it's very difficult. We've had this conversation before for a, a community as diverse as the unincorporated area of Washoe County. We have many different miles to cover and many different types of roads to cover and different customers to help facilitate. However, you know, I understand that COVID-19 has been a difficult challenge for many, many companies to respond to. There hasn't been any playbook on how to really do this and how to keep our employees safe, but at the same time, continue to maintain services. And especially for, I think, a service, a utility service such as yours, it's been probably very difficult. However, that, that does not eliminate the ability for you to respond and work with the community. These people are going through very challenging times. I agree with all the commissioners, the rate change at a time like this is very difficult, especially since certain services were reduced, i.e., transfer stations were closed, recycle, the recycling drop-off was closed, extra bag pickups, people were allotted, were, were not carried forward. We usually have a spring pickup date. Those, those were never honored, yet we increased fees. And I, and I don't like doing business with people that do business like that. I never have and I never will. And we, we acknowledged the agreement with you under the understanding that you would work with us and work with the unincorporated areas and we knew that you knew the challenges. But if we're just going to become another corporate statistic or just a name on a spreadsheet, then we need to really reconsider what we're doing because I just think of it as poor business. And that is not how, over my lifetime, when I was here, Reno Disposal would have operated or any of the companies previously. So, we have changed from what we used to and how we used to behave and what we used to do within our community to now a corporate type of stance, especially amongst a, and I'm not trying to say that your, your employees are not members of this community and deserve to be treated as such. What I'm saying is that corporate should have taken a different stance in regards to billing. I, I think corporate should have had a better communication with the community well before this if you're going to change services. And I agree with my fellow commissioners that I think it's time that we probably have a more prudent conversation about our agreement with Waste Management and how it's going to be facilitated, that that's going to be corrected, some of the rights, the wrongs that I believe transpired during COVID-19. So, those are my comments, Mr. Martinelli. We've received a number of challenges in Washoe County and throughout Washoe Valley and Galena Creek and a number of my areas in District Two. So, I'm hoping that these comments that you've heard today will be carried back and you'll be able to work with your management staff and executive team to figure out some viable solutions for the unincorporated residents. But I would hope that we get some resolution quickly. All right, that, I will, if there aren't any, any further comments from any of the, the commissioners.
One more comment, please.
Commissioner Jung, I'm sorry.
No worries. I did hear Mr. Martinelli say that the Health Department, the Health Department, the Health Department, well, again, I've been trying to change the way that we use language in our local community because I think a lot of what we do is confuse people. And the Health Department as well gets their direction from the governor, from the State Board of Health, from the state. Again, it's not the Health Department. The state informs our Health Department and our Health Department, just like our Board of County Commissioners, does nothing without the state's blessing. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Yeah, hold on, Mr. Martinelli, would you like to respond?
Just a couple of comments. I'm not, I'm not going to get into a, a debate with you, but I think it's pretty disingenuous of you and Commissioner Jung to indicate that you received no response from me. I had two or three different conversations with the manager. I'd offered to meet with each of you before this meeting to answer any questions you might have. So, you know, communications is two-way street and Eric and I had a very, very nice, candid conversation about this issue. I explained to him our reasoning behind it and I think, I think those, those reasons are valid. I mean, we've got, you're only concerned about Washoe County. The entire impact of the rate increases is, is over a million dollars in our revenue run rate and we were not willing to accept that as well as absorbing all of the late fees, non-payments for service, not canceling service, just in Washoe County, that run rate's about 30,000 a month that we expect, or a quarter. We expect that to go to 40 or 50,000 a quarter. So, I certainly understand your position. I have an old, I have respect for you guys to have your opinion, but we did have a reason, reason for doing it. And I think it's pretty arrogant on the part of the county to substitute their judgment on why we made a particular decision in, in, in a business that you really don't know anything about. Now, like you guys, you, the decisions you make from that dais, 50% of the people are not going to be happy with your decision and are going to critique every one of them. So, you know, if we made the wrong decision, maybe we made the wrong decision. But I, I, I don't, I don't know what else to say to that, but I, I'm offended by the fact that you, you, you're putting on the record that we did not respond, when in fact we did.
Well, Mr. Martinelli, I, I appreciate your comments and, and, you know, personally, I, I don't receive unincorporated service. I get my service from the city, just as Commissioner Jung does. However, I do respond, I do represent 100,000 people. And so, when I say I didn't receive comments from you, I'm saying, not me personally, sir, I'm saying that the entire community felt like they did not get the communication level from your, your company. The 100,000 individuals, the complaints that I got from my, my, did not feel that they got that ability to speak with you. And so, that is where that comment from. It is not from me to you. It's not from this commission to your, your executive office. It is us representing the half million individuals that we do with here in Washoe County and the 200,000 that are represented in the unincorporated area of this community that we are trying to convey to you felt this way. So, if we want to make this about a personal issue back and forth, that's not the case. That's never what this business has ever been about. This has been about us conveying to Waste Management the discontent of the citizens of the unincorporated area, sir. And so, I don't think there is any mal-intent from any of these commissioners towards you, sir, or trying to say that we were disingenuous with your ability to communicate with us. I don't think that's been said. I said that the community felt that they were not communicated to and the communication from them has been left. So, that is where the discussion is.
No, I understand that none of this is personal. I, and I didn't mean to imply that if I did.
Well, it, it felt very personal toward, directed towards me when you said me and Commissioner Jung, but I, I won't, I won't, I let a breeze off me and we'll move past this. But what I'm just trying to convey, so if it's not you that doesn't want to participate in this, I'm happy to have this conversation with any of the, the individuals in the upper management of, of Waste Management out of Phoenix or whoever would like to participate. I'm just saying. I'm just saying, this is not the way that I've ever seen business done in this community before, previously. So with that, Commissioner Jung.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess what my experience is, is if the board gives the manager direction to write a letter to Mr. Martinelli, what I expect is a prompt and accurate written reply to the Board of Commissioners, not a phone call. And we didn't get any of that. And so that, to me, I am not being disingenuous. And to be told that I am being and that I'm offending somebody, that really is disrespectful to me. And it, it is personal now. And I'm just saying, we didn't hear anything. We were pushing our manager to do something because we were hearing so much. And then to be told that he reached out to me and talked to me, there's none of that. That, that never happened. And if I missed an email, I'm deeply sorry, but we really were asking for a written response for the contract. Thank you.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and Mr. Martinelli, look, I, I appreciate the fact that Waste Management had substantive losses, as have every business. Talk to any casino in town about their losses and, and many other large businesses of the magnitude that Waste Management is running. Of course, Waste Management is a real wide business with billions of dollars in profit every year. And I, I'm, I'm a little offended with the fact that there was a million dollar loss when Tumwa had a, had a 1.3 million dollar loss also, but yet we deferred the rate increase until we could get ourselves over this. And so, look, I know you have a business to run, sir. I understand completely, but these are, these are difficult times. And, and I know that there's going to be a lot of people out there that are unable to pay their bills. We have that everywhere. Envy Energy has that, Tumwa has that, all the utilities have that. We have that in our sewers. And it's, it's everywhere. So, you know, to think that a rate increase, so that you guys can make this stuff up, and you said yourself that you were, you know, that, that you didn't have the manpower to do certain kinds of things. So I, I'm a little frustrated. I have to be very, very honest with you commissioners, I'm frustrated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Martinelli, you know, you know my telephone, my personal telephone number and where I live. So if you really wanted to talk to me, you could have called me and gotten me, and I would have talked back to you. I, I wasn't talking about you personally, so you shouldn't be making it personal against the county. What we were talking about, what we continue to talk about is the citizens in this community who had a right to have you live up to the terms of your side of the agreement, which you didn't do. But they have to pay the cost of, of us living up to your, to our side of the agreement by giving you the raise in pay. I didn't address that because I knew all the other commissioners were going to. But the fact of the matter is, that's the problem here, is that you guys came across as if you didn't really care about the citizens. You know, we've lost way more than a million dollars in this process. So a million dollars is like a spit in the bucket. I wish that's all we could say we lost in this process. We've lost way more than that. I, I'm really disappointed, and Greg, I expect better from you because you're a really good guy, I've known you forever. And I really frankly expect you, as the manager, to run hurt on your team. I know that they don't always do what you want them to do. That's a fact of life. But to come out and say that you think we're being disingenuous is really nasty on your part. And I, I really would like to say to you, please make sure that you do as I asked and make sure that your team get out there and clean up the mess that's been left because your company decided not to live up to its terms of the franchise. Many of my citizens that are complaining live in Washoe County and not in the city. And so many of them are in fact, did in fact expect through the month of May to get all of their extra bags picked up, and they got nothing. And yet they got a raise in pay. So, I mean, a raise in, in cost. So that's, that's a really negative sense. And I, I hate to throw disparaging dirt, but I have to say I agree with both Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner Lucy, that Vice Chair Lucy, that, I mean Chair Lucy, that we really expect more than that from our partners, and we consider you a partner.
All right. Mr. Martinelli, I see no further comments from the commission. I think you've got a good sense of our frustrations. Do you have any final comments, sir?
I do not. Just wish you all the best and please stay safe.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martinelli. And be assured, I will be calling you shortly. All right, we will close item four or item five. Mr. Manager, we're on item six, sir.
Item six is an appearance and presentation by Washoe County District Health Officer Kevin Dick to update the board on COVID-19 emergency response, the impact of COVID-19 on Washoe County and local emergency services, including impacts on hospitals and hospital capacity and the availability and status of COVID-19 testing and antibody testing. And I believe he joins us by Zoom today.
Mr. Health District Officer, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can.
Can you hear me, Chair Lucy?
Oh, good. We can see you this morning as well, sir. Nice to see you.
Great. Well, good morning, and thanks for putting me on the agenda for an update for the county commissioners. The current number of cases that we have in Washoe County, we reported yesterday, 1,405. Sadly, we reported two additional deaths yesterday. And that brings our total deaths for Washoe County to 54. And I just wanted to also follow up on, on your comments, Chair Lucy, about the importance of people doing their part and trying to help to prevent the spread of this disease in our community. These 54 deaths have happened just since March, and they have been tragedies for obviously the, the people that have passed away, but their, their families and their loved ones. This is a tremendous impact to our community that has occurred already. When we look at the flu seasons over the last few years, the 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19 flu seasons, over the entire flu season, from September through May, we had an average of 16 deaths from the flu. And so we're at 54 deaths now from COVID-19. So it's, it's, it's very important that people take this seriously and, and recognize the, the threat that this is and the need for everybody to, to work together. I've been really amazed with the response that we've had from the Health District and all of our employees engaged in this response, the partners that have joined us through the National Guard, representatives from other county departments that have pitched in, and all of our regional partners in this response, working together. And we really need everybody in our community to be working together to keep us moving forward and keep us safe as we're reopening the economy. I observed in the grocery store, a gentleman that was not wearing a mask, who coughed in his hand, who then used that hand to pull something out of his cart and put back on a grocery shelf. And that type of inattention to what we need to be doing to prevent the spread of this disease can have serious effects for all of us. So I want to remind everybody in the community of, of the importance of you being responsible and working together to, to move us forward and to have us continue to be able to reopen. The Washoe County did report our highest number of new cases in a day on the 17th of May. That was impacted significantly by an outbreak that was occurring at Arbor's Memory Care. But it's important to recognize that we're not out of the woods. We still are having significant numbers of cases, and people need to be exercising their, their best judgment and their best behaviors as we move forward through this. The hospitals have remained with good capacity. The short-term acute care beds are at 66% occupied. Our ICU beds at 45% occupied, and our ventilators down at 12%. Are all, all good indicators that we have plenty of healthcare capacity. But we need to ensure that we preserve that and we don't have another surge, which is possible in our future. I've talked with Dr. Sloan at Renown, and they are leaving the build-out in place of their 700 additional beds that they put in their parking structure in, in case. So we do need that capacity in the future. So we're, we are still concerned about what might happen if people are not continuing to social distance and to act responsibly as we move through this. The, one of the, or several of the activities that the Health District has been engaged in have been the, the testing and the contact tracing that follows that. We have a call center system. We also have a website portal, both English and Spanish, for people to be able to go through that process to get scheduled for, for testing. We have worked with getting an automated system through Acela that's helping to reduce the staffing workload in that process of getting scheduled for the drive-through post to be able to then also receive lab results back electronically for those that have a negative test result. For those that are positive, we have a, a small army working on our contact tracing with the, the interviews with the positive cases to identify who they may have had close contact with and exposed, and then contacting all of those individuals to be able to work with them on quarantining and monitoring for symptoms for that 14-day incubation period. So we currently have 559 active cases, and each of those individuals, we have a person assigned to them that they are communicating with to either through their isolation or through the isolation for all of those cases, and then with the case contacts. So it's a significant workload. We're fortunate, we have the guard deployed through June 24th. We've received 30 additional guard members over the past couple of weeks. We had some new people join us today that are being trained up in that capacity. And then we're also working with putting together the work plan and the proposal for the Paycheck Protection Program, federal funding, that's going to provide about $10 million to the Health District to support the testing and contact tracing work moving forward. We've done some mobile post testing at different facilities, high-risk populations like the shelter. The, unfortunately, we've had a problem with the commercial lab that the incident management team contracted with early on in this process to ensure that we had good testing capacity. The contract for the 5,000 tests through that lab had a 72-hour turnaround time in it for their processing of the samples. They have failed to perform. In meeting that time, we just had a slug of tests that were returned to us the results yesterday evening that were collected back in, on May 14th. So as a result, and that was a mobile post that we had at the Reno Event Center for the, the shelter location there that's been established to increase social distancing, we had positive cases that were identified from, from that population. And as they were asymptomatic, the ones that we identified there, it was too late for us to be able to have used those results for an intervention with them. So we are working with the state lab and to ramp up testing, the, the state lab is increasing their capacity with the utilization of some additional equipment. And we've also received some additional collection kits through FEMA and DEM, working with the state lab. So we are continuing to, to operate our drive-through post. To date, we have conducted, we have test results back from 20,566 people who had their specimens collected here in Washoe County. And that's about 4.3% of our population. We are, we did have an individual with the Health District, Eric Lammon, who is responsible for overseeing the post operation out there when we're having the, the drive-through occurring, was recognized as the hero of the day by the governor's office last week. So we're, we're proud for him and for all of the work that the team has put in that allowed him to be recognized for those efforts. Next week, we are going to be opening up our post, operating it daily from Monday through Saturday. And we're going to make the testing available for anybody who wants to contact us to get scheduled for testing while the post is operating each of those mornings. And that's through our, our call line, 328-2427, or people can go directly through the web portal to get, provide the information they need to be sent the, the link to be scheduled for testing. And that's on our COVID-19 website. We also have a project going on. We're working with the UNR epidemiology researchers and our epidemiology staff on a seroprevalence study. It's using the antibody testing capability that the state lab has, and it's, will provide us with a, an approach to identify the percent of the population that's been exposed to COVID-19 to date. So we have sent out letters to a little over 1,100 of our residents throughout Washoe County. The population that we test has to be representative of the county, and therefore it's a randomly selected methodology of, we have 173 census tracts that were identified. And from those census tracts, seven households that were randomly selected, and those received the letters inviting them to participate in the study. We're hopeful that we have a good response to the, the letters. We had set a deadline of this afternoon at 5:00 for people to respond to the website that we identified, indicating that they would participate with us for the study. We were, we need to get about 25, a little under 25% of that population responding. We are not there today, to date. So we'll be messaging on that additionally today. But we really need people that receive those letters to sign up so that we can then, we're planning on running the sample collection for that, which requires a, a blood draw from one of the adults in the household on June 9th through 11th in order to be able to collect the data for the researchers to do the analysis on over the following week. So there's a, there's a lot going on, a lot of moving parts in all of this. I'm sure I didn't cover anything, but I'll, I'll turn it over there if people have questions or areas they want me to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. I really do appreciate it. You know, you, it has been a challenging time, especially as the Washoe County District Health Officer. Couple of things, I'd like to go over this and have some discussions about this. I think there's a lot of, as you pointed out, there is a lot going on, and it seems to change minute to minute, not day to day, but minute to minute. And it's very difficult to address a number of these challenges as it goes on. So I appreciate all the work that you're doing. However, it's changing so quickly. I think there are some challenges that we need to get out for the general public in regards to the testing and the impacts. You're absolutely right. You know, there are three parts, I, in my opinion, three parts to this pandemic and our response here in Washoe County. First, first is the sanitation and safety. The general public have to adhere to the sanitation, the hygiene, wearing, the social distancing, the wearing of masks. Those things have to be, to occur. They have been the most effective in combating COVID-19. However, the next is identify. However, the next is identifying, identifying those individuals that are sick, that have become, are either potential positives or confirmed positives, and giving them the resources that they need, whether that's hospitalization, quarantine, testing, contact tracing for their families. And then the final step, for those of those, those twenty percent that are positive but do, and do show symptoms, the ability to get access to treatment. Here at the County Commission, it's always been our initiative to protect the most vulnerable populations, those populations that we manage the most. Now, with that, we built the Edison Housing Unit and provided three hundred beds available for those within our community that are presumed positive or are confirmed positive if they were unable to quarantine, a place to safely quarantine. To this day, we still have not placed one individual into that housing unit, which is frustrating to me because we keep finding ways, our positives keep going up, but yet we're not finding ways to continue to isolate maybe some of these factors. And I know there's challenges for certain populations to move and do that. But we need to probably, in my opinion, try to do something differently to find some quarantine for those individuals. And I know there's, this is, this is not a pejorative towards the Health District. It's just a challenge trying to get the community to respond. So I'd like to work with you in regards to that. Now, Mr. Dick, is it, it's my understanding that on June first, you're going to open and try to move to some more asymptomatic testing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Chair Lucy. We're, we have additional swap collection kits that we're receiving now from the state lab. And that's the week of, I'm looking at my calendar here, starting Monday, June first, and through Saturday, the sixth, we'll operate the drive-through testing, the post, we call it.
Right.
Each morning. And so anybody that is, wants to be tested and call us or work through the portal to get scheduled for that, beginning later this week.
Okay. And it would be, and you know, and I would offer and I would recommend, if need be, that if we move into asymptomatic and we find it very beneficial, that we set it based, if possible, and we have the workforce and the capability to do so, but a post down south located at the convention center. And I would work with you to help organize that at the convention center so people could pull through in the parking lot, being that the convention center is not being utilized, and casinos around it are closed, and so are the open-air malls. It seems to be a highly functional place to do so. It is a community building. And we prefer, provide benefit for residents and unencouraged members of the South because I think people want to test through. The next challenge I have, though, is if we ramp up testing and we start doing more testing, up to nine hundred, a thousand, something tests a day, is that going to cause delay in test returns?
I'm sorry, will that cause delay in test results?
Yeah, the test result, the return of the results to individuals. We're currently, I'm assuming we're seeing about twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround, depending on about when the tests are collected. But will that increase that, those delay, will there be a delay in those test results?
So the testing that we'll be doing next week, I think will also be a stress test of our system to see if we can maintain that twenty-four-hour response. I expect that we'll have lower positivity rates as we're opening up the criteria to everybody to be tested. So we'll, we'll have to assess how that works with the response from the testing next week. We're also working with the state lab and DEM on an approach for managing the available lab capacity at the state lab. And so we should have the ability of the state lab to provide us with the testing that we need based on the population of Washoe County in relation to the population of the other counties the state lab is serving. And so we believe that that will provide us with a sufficient capacity for over a thousand tests per day. I'd also, though, like to stress the importance of continuing to make sure that we're testing vulnerable populations and high-risk personnel. The, our first responder workforce, our healthcare facilities, long-term care, senior living centers, are, you know, places that are at higher risk, people that are at higher risk. And it's important we be able to identify cases that are occurring within those populations. And that will be testing that will need to occur on a repeating basis. And so that will also consume some of that capacity for our testing moving forward.
Understood. And then, as we all heard on the Friday, the governor has expressed the potential of reopening the gaming community on June fourth. And with that, you know, a majority of our individuals will be going, of our communities will be going back to work. One of the things that we continue to discuss is that we want to make sure that our communities have that consumer confidence, those individuals that are coming here, that they're safe and that they continue to be safe. Now, I know a number of the properties have worked with commercial vendors to just start testing through their employees. But I would continue, and I would also stress that as we continue to open and we continue to, that we provide as much testing for their family members and the secondary businesses that will be helping facilitate that reopening for all of these properties, whether it's laundry services or food delivery or whatever that may be, that we are doing everything in our possibility to help those companies get through testing for their employees because I think that testing will be crucial to provide that confidence to those individuals as we move forward, just very much similar to what they are doing in Clark County currently. So if we can work through a plan or work with you on a plan and work with the manager to identify what that is, I would be, that would be very helpful for me and so that we can continue to elevate that for the, not only the community, but for the businesses that are going to be reopening up as we see businesses in phase two and then also into phase three. So commissioners, are there any other comment? Commissioner Hartung, I have you signed in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dick, I appreciate the update. I've got, I've got a few questions. I'm glad that the chairman brought up the Edison Housing because I know that there have been several people that have contacted me and wanted to potentially utilize that. And so the process, it might be good if we had some type of a codified process that people understand and can utilize. And also, what the rules and regulations would be. Because I think some people have been under the impression, and maybe I'm wrong about this, they can come and go as they please while living in those, in those units. And so I don't, I don't know whether it's a twenty-four-seven quarantine or whether they can continue to work and then just quarantine themselves away from their family. So that, that would be good to understand that. And then I'm glad that we are now going to start testing more widely. As you know, I had a family contact me that really did need to be tested. They did get tested. And by the way, all eight of them turned out to be positive when, you know, once the mother family had been positive. And they all pretty much knew that that was going to be the case, but they had to seek other means to be tested. So it was sad that they couldn't come through the Health District's testing facility. I like the chairman's idea of having a facility down south, but it would be nice to also have some in the North Valleys and also some out in Spanish Springs. And maybe we can relocate if, if we have enough manpower and enough testing kits at some of the high schools that would be down for the summer. That, that may be a possibility. And then my question in this is, we're now starting to test for antibodies. And do you know what the accuracy of that test is, Mr. Dick? Is it, do you have any, do you have any numbers on that?
Yes, I do, Commissioner Hartung. The antibody test that the state lab is using, it's the Abbott antibody test, not to be confused with the Abbott ID Now, which is the molecular test that is a rapid test that's drawn some concerns about false negatives with that test. The Abbott antibody test that the state lab has, they did run validation tests on it. And that test is a hundred percent on sensitivity and ninety-nine point six percent on specificity. And so it's very reliable for us to use in this study. The, there are a number of antibody tests that have been developed commercially. And I know that people are going to their healthcare provider and can pay to have an antibody test done. But we're not recommending that at this point because of the great variability in the quality of those tests and concerns about whether the results from those are reliable or not.
Okay, good, yeah. And because I had an occasion to have some conversations with some ER docs over the weekend, and they questioned the accuracy and the reliability of those antibody tests. And I think, Mr. Dick, is that, is that the way that they all work?
There are different ways. The one that we're using requires a blood draw. So it's not as easy as the finger prick tests, but it's, it provides us with the reliable results through the state lab.
Okay, that's great, yeah. And what's the turnaround time on those? I mean, I, I know that when I go down and have my blood tested, when I, when I get my labs done, it's still a three to four, maybe even five-day turnaround time. Is that what we're still dealing with?
Well, we haven't worked with the state lab yet on the antibody tests. They're reserving their capacity for that for studies like we're doing, a population-based study. My understanding is, though, that they have capacity to be able to run five hundred a day. And so we should have a quick turnaround within twenty-four hours for the results for those.
That's great. Thank you so much, Mr. Dick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we look at expanding testing stations outside of the property here at Ninth Street, I would like to see if we couldn't get testing in Incline Village also. We have a number of elderly people up there who have a difficult time getting down to the valley. And that is a small enclosed community that's getting inundated by California people. So I think it would be a benefit to the citizens up there if we could get some testing up in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could comment on that, I'd like to just do a shout-out for the North Lake Tahoe Fire Department. We did reach out to them. We have several census tracts that were randomly selected that were in the Incline and Crystal Bay areas. And so North Lake Tahoe Fire has agreed to do the serology collection, the blood draw for individuals if they're participating up there. So I appreciate their assistance with that. But yeah, thank you for the comment.
You know, and Mr. Dick, to, to address Commissioner Hartung and Vice Chair Burke Bigler's discussions about the testing. Southern Nevada Health District put together, I, with their plan, you know, obviously, they have quite a few people to cover, but they would put out a, on their website and through their COVID response website, have a calendar of where potential post will be. For example, I know that today, that their post is going to be in the city of Mesquite, at Samstown, Central Cristana El Shaadi, and All Saints Episcopal Church. And as we continue to talk about that, I think that's maybe a potential as to maybe mimic what they are doing in Southern Nevada, that the Southern Nevada Health District to, if we have a post plan that is mobile, that we could give potential sites throughout the community and that those could move and do those collection sites. So it would, that would be my recommendation as we move through the summer.
We can look at the additional sites. I think that it's important for the commissioners to recognize that we lose efficiencies as well as we're locating mobile posts in different places versus using the system that we have set up with our drive-through post currently. And, you know, I think some of the locations that you indicated are kind of more remote communities in Clark County. And I appreciate the comment regarding Incline and testing there. But I think we also need to recognize that we're not as big as Clark County as well. And that we need, what we need to do is find the right balance so that we're getting the testing conducted that we need for our community. But, you know, ten million dollars sounds like a lot of money that we're getting for that testing. But it's, it's not going to provide us with an infinite amount of testing. The, I'm very pleased that Renown is working to increase their testing capacity. They've worked with some of the local casinos for the testing with the samples being shipped out to commercial labs. But Renown is implementing plans to ramp up their capacity to be able to do the testing in-house as we move into the summer. So that will be a welcome additional capacity for our region.
Yep. And I spoke with, I spoke with Dr. Sloan yesterday, and he has, they are validating their thermal fissures today, as in my understanding.
Fantastic.
Yep. All right, Commissioner John, do you have anything by chance you would like to ask?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Dick, and thank you for this giant lift that you and your team and the community have done together. You gave us some stats on Washoe County-specific flu. Can you get back to us and give us a statewide glance at that as well as a nationwide glance? A lot of different people that I talked to give me way out of control stats. And I, I don't really have a place to go to say, no, that's not really the case when it comes to what people are calling a normal flu season. So I would like that, if you could just email us or tell us just via email or right now online, what, what's the best resource you think I can go to look at, real-time data? And then I want to talk about this push from your commissioners to, well, they're not your commissioners, you don't report to us, which is another place I'm going to. Of course, in our fantasy land, we would bring all of these tests to everybody. But what we have learned in dealing with identifying and funding those most vulnerable is that you first go everywhere that is on bus lines, and then you go out concurrently based on, because if people are not on bus lines, we can infer that they have already demonstrated their own mobility. Now, I know there are people that are left out in that. But as an aggregate piece of data, that's always been the best way to target and prevent any sort of public disease outbreak, specifically STDs, which we used to chase a lot more than we do now as a health district, which is actually good news. I mean, I think people are still, are worse than ever with their protecting themselves because we've essentially cured HIV. So just, I just wanted to put that on the record. And I get, we all get what you're saying. You have so many resources, you have to use them as the best. But let's not forget, our chairman also was the largest funder for a zip code investigation when we were trying to move the mark on preventable diseases. And we have done that tremendously because of his donation because he knew that that was the way that we, he would get the most bang for his buck if we really focused that. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that. But I get it, and I think you are allowed to dream, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioner Hartung. I think dreaming is more important now than ever. So I hear you, I'll support you, but we do have to be strategic, you know, in as much as we can and always make sure that we are aware of the fact that there are outliers even when we make these generalizations. So I am fully aware of that. Another thing I wanted to talk about, Commissioner Hartung brought up, we want to update Mr. Health District Officer and Mr. Manager on who oversees the Health District Officer, how that board is made up of, and what changes, if any, we see need to go forward. Additionally, in that update, which needs to be at the next meeting, by the way, this is useless to me in September. I need this at the next meeting, what each entity puts in in terms of tax dollars. And that's also to include the general fund transfers that we have done. I believe it's about a third now of the Health District's budget. But when I first got got there, it was over 50% that Washoe County citizens was paying, but only had representation of one Washoe County elected official, completely lopsided. And you know my feelings, all of you do, about citizen boards who are not elected making elected decisions and how that gets a little messy. And it also diffuses responsibility. So I want that whole conversation at our next meeting in two weeks. And then finally, Mr. Health District Officer, I, I have in my research came across pretty consistent findings, and I don't want to put you on the spot now, so just get back to us. But what I've understood is that the temperature, taking somebody's temperature is good 65% of the time. 35% of what is known as super spreaders are absolutely asymptomatic. So can you get that information vetted back to me from your statistician or whoever runs your numbers for you? Because I think sometimes people are getting their temperature taken to go into a nightclub, not realizing that they're only, they're 65% sure that everybody that passed is okay, but that 35% is what, who is getting all the different populations sick. So can you please get back to me on that? Then I want to talk about, and again, some language I find ourselves using. I'm the biggest person that has to fix that all the time, as is well documented. And that is, I think we need to stop saying elderly, because I don't think people know what that means anymore. And really talking to people that do or do not believe they're at risk, don't consider themselves elderly. And it's not elderly, it's actually 65 and older. Now, if you want to call that elderly, I know some commissioners that will raise hell for me saying that. So a preexisting condition is age, and that is 65 and older. That is the biggest predictor that you will get sick of and experience terrible either side effects of recovery or death. Additionally, what goes with that is high blood pressure, which anybody I know who's served in office for any decent amount of time pretty much has that. And then of course, diabetic, heart disease, et cetera. But high blood pressure and 65 and plus. So, and then of course, all the other diseases that go with obesity, which we know in America is already a preexisting condition. So let's just be careful how we talk, because I'll tell you, I know a lot of people that I consider elderly who do not consider themselves elderly. And they're in their 80s. So we need to take that word out of our vernacular, just so we can be a lot more clear with constituents. And then finally, Mr. Health District Officer and Mr. Manager and anybody else who's involved with emergency control, can we start looking, as we are starting to get breath, rather than going back to business as normal, I really want us to focus on congregate prevention. I think everybody missed that one, even though it was the first big case up in Washington. But we need to look at protection for people that have to live together. And I want you, people who are in charge of those things, to use the agencies who've tested enough. Because if you say, well, this place never had a virus, yeah, you never tested them. So I guess if you never test them, there is no virus. There's no data to support either way. So look at agencies who did enough testing and what they learned for best practices in those congregate areas we have control over to make sure we start making that a standard operating procedure from this day forward, no matter what the emergency is. That has to be part of our standard operating procedure. Just to learn from that and to not have any more of these huge outbreaks in, you know, nursing homes. And I know the county doesn't have a lot to do with it, but we do, because we do fund them in a lot of ways. So that's, that's kind of my feedback on, on what we're looking at right now. And, oh, and one other thing, in two weeks, I need to know this as well. I call it the Edison Way Quarantine condos. Can we get an update on what the restrictions are, what the federal money's actually went to, who is available? As Commissioner Hartung said, what are the criteria? What is the behavioral component we expect, which I believe you get your food delivered to your door? But I'm making it up, I'm just speculating, that's the best way you do quarantine, but I don't know what the rules are there. But I understand it's a FEMA issued resource and we cannot afford to not get what you know I'm totally against. We have to put the money up first and then FEMA, when they get to it, when the feds get to it, they'll reimburse us. So I want this clean and by the rules and having the cost centers ready, but also so that we can give a sense to who's eligible, who can use it, do we need to broadcast that, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right, Mr. Dick, do you have any final comments for us this morning?
Just on the last item that Commissioner Jung was mentioning, I would suggest it'd be good to have our incident commander, Aaron Kennison, involved also in an update for the county commissioners. This is a, still a regional response and the Health District isn't the lead in, in all of these areas. But I think it's important to provide that information for you. And I think that the commissioner is, is correct in, you know, there are some constraints due to FEMA. And we don't want to do something with the Edison complex that's not allowed, that would negate the, the federal funding potential for reimbursement for, for that facility. But I appreciate everybody's comments and your time today and thank you for your support. And we'll continue to work together with our community to, to move through this crisis.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. We appreciate you taking the time this morning. All right, we will close this item and move on as it is for discussion only. We are now have, and we do have Mr. Solero with us, Washoe County Assistant Manager for Item 7. So, Mr. Manager.
Item 7 is the appearance and presentation by Washoe County Assistant County Manager, Dave Solero, to update the board on Washoe County processes for enforcement at the Governor's COVID-19 directives concerning businesses and business guiding, business operating guidelines. Discussion by the board and possible action, but not limited to direction of staff to modify current enforcement processes, expand current enforcement processes, or curtail current enforcement processes.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Solero, before I let you get started, this is, this is an item I, I asked to have placed on the agenda for today. And I think it's a prudent discussion as we continue to move into the next phases of our road to recovery from the governor's office. As we all know, the governor will be doing his press conference this afternoon, kind of elaborating on that. But what I'd like to have is a discussion with you, from you in regards to what our enforcements are. How are we going about that? How has it been? Have we been getting feedback from 311 and those individuals out there? And what are we doing to try to continue to push for that safety? So with that, Mr. Solero.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Hopefully you can see my screen this morning.
We can.
For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager, Chair Lucy, members of the board. We have provided for you some information here and I think it's good information for all of the community. So as you discussed, the, the phase one opening, actually when COVID first started and we actually closed businesses, we created a, a little group of regional partners, City Reno, City of Sparks. We wanted to make sure that what we were doing was consistent across all three jurisdictions, because our citizens, you know, live maybe in unincorporated Washoe County, but they may shop in, in one of the cities or vice versa. And so we, we thought it was very, it was imperative that the guidelines became regional in nature. And so as the governor gave us the ability to move into phase one, we rebranded our, our items to Phase One reopening guideline. And that will continue with all phases of reopening. So as we're preparing for phase two, we will update the Phase One reopening guidelines. All of this information is great guidance, not only for the business owners, but for the consumers and for anybody in our community. This information can be found covid19washoe.com. There's a very prominent buzz button for businesses. So don't let the community members think it's only for businesses. This information is there, available for all and includes contact information for the enforcement entities. The guide looks at something like this, again branded regionally. I think the information for guidance and enforcement is very timely in that we may be moving into a different phase. But Washoe County is certainly available for a lot of general questions. You've heard me say it before, utilizing Washoe 311, dialing 311, or sending an email to washoe311@washoecounty.us, you can get those, those questions answered. Specific for enforcement in unincorporated Washoe County, enforcement action begins with a call to 311 or 3282003. Our 311 operators take the information and if it happens to be a constituent calling about a business in City Reno or City in Sparks, they will provide that information to the proper jurisdiction. But if it's specific to unincorporated Washoe County, our code compliance officers get the call, they take down the information and they go out and review the complaint with the business. They review the guidelines on site with the business owner and provide information. What we're finding is that when we follow back up within 48 hours, our businesses become compliant. If they're not compliant, we would forward that information to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, but at this time, we have not had to forward any items to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Education seems to work very well. The majority of the business owners truly want to be open and so they are following the guidance as necessary. This is their livelihood and they're grateful when we show up and provide additional information. As of May 22nd, there are no open complaints in unincorporated Washoe County. I think that's very important. One of the things, as we go out and discuss with the businesses, is specific to the way they are operating. Again, we've spoken about it, we've heard it a couple of times this morning, the importance of all of us doing our own part when we go to these businesses. Some have mandatory facial coverings, others do not. That is a choice by the business at this point. While it is currently urged to have those facial coverings, not all businesses agree with that. And so we are not there to police that piece. But certainly, you know, as we as a community do our part, we also have a choice. And so I think it's important that, you know, if, if you are a consumer and you're in a business and you're concerned about the, the other patrons not wearing facial coverings, you know, we don't have to, we all have a personal choice. So I'll, I think I'll leave it at that, that we have a choice to, to frequent that business or not. I think some additional items related to businesses that are ongoing out there that are good for the community to understand is we have temporarily suspended, temporarily suspended our late penalties and other disciplinary actions associated with our business licenses. We do know that there are still businesses that are not open and they're not bringing in any revenue and it's very difficult for them to make the payments necessary. And so we have, we have temporarily suspended those things through June at this point. Our gaming and liquor licenses, again, gaming is one that is, no revenue is coming in. And so a lot of the gaming operators have come in and lowered their number of tables or slots to one game during the quarter. They prepay in advance. So the quarter of April, May, and June, many of them have come in and lowered their gaming fee by, by lowering the number of slots that are not in operation right now. There is still the gaming tax portion of the license, which is under review. And I've had a conversation with the Resort Association to, to understand their perspective on when they may be opening up, what that looks like. And I'll be bringing an item back to the board for your review on a, on a potential, not forgiveness of fee, but a, a payment plan as we move forward. Some of these gaming taxes are very important to other entities as well, City Reno, City Sparks, Trucking Meadows Fire, North Lake Tahoe Fire. So we have to, have to make sure we're working in conjunction with those fees as well.
Mr. Solero?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding from Chairwoman Morgan too, that they are, the Gaming Nevada Gaming Control Board is meeting today, they have a special meeting to kind of discuss this issue as well statewide in regards to gaming revenue tax collection. Is that correct?
I'm, you know, I'm not so sure if the, I don't, I don't know that for, for certain, but certainly I will, I will do some research on that coming forward. I know the Resort Association is meeting next week to discuss from their members, you know, what this tax specifically in Washoe County looks like. But certainly there are larger tax, tax implications across the state, so.
No, I know for sure, I know for sure that that organization, the Nevada Gaming Control Board is meeting today to discuss this. I just don't know what they, they're meeting currently, concurrently as us right now. And that should be, come out of that discussion later today.
Okay. Additionally, in our utility services, we have suspended late penalties and other disciplinary actions associated with that. We did go ahead and mail out delinquent notices that were delinquent through the end of February. Since those were already delinquent, we decided we would go ahead and mail those notices. However, we have not mailed any additional delinquent notices really for March, April, May. We'll see what, what June brings forth. And that includes not only our sewer utility, but the Spanish Springs Flood Detention Facility and the Golden Valley Water Recharge Program. One, one item of note here is our building services. Washoe County Planning and Building are all operating our, utilizing our Acela platform. We have changed our business practice and we are accepting electronic review. Field inspections are being done virtually in some instances, which is actually going to be a, a good help for us moving into the future. I think that's a, a good way to continue and keep moving forward with that specifically. So commissioners, with that, I'm hopeful that I covered the information that you were looking for, specific to kind of enforcement of our businesses. Like I say, our businesses have been very responsive to our needs when we go out. We, you know, like I say, they, they all want to be open. They want to be following the guidelines that have been provided. They don't want to buck the system, so to speak. You know, there are some businesses that are right on the edge of whether they're phase one or phase two opening. And so some of the guidance we provided is, you know, if you've got to ask a question or you think you're finding a loophole, you should probably remain closed. But we have been working with each of those businesses as they call to work them through kind of the, the guidances we understand it. And I believe that that has been well received within our community. And I do know that City Reno and City of Sparks have similar process. We all follow the, the same process as far as notification, education, before we escalate up to any law enforcement action. So with that, commissioners, I will go ahead and.
A lot of that language will get cleaned up in the Phase Two directives, we're hoping, from the governor's office. There has been tireless conversations this weekend about that. So that should be, a lot of that should get rectified, we're hoping. With that, Commissioner Jung, I have you signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Solero, and you might not know this right now, but hopefully somebody listening in and staff will know this, what percentage of the budget is gaming tax?
Ooh, I will have to get that information back to you as far as what, what percentage of the budget. I do know it's a very, you know, fairly small amount in the, in the.
Oh, I need to know the exact amount, please.
Yep, I will get that.
In the grand scheme, I think. Thank you. And I want it as a percentage, not a, not a whatever, you know, they pay this much million. I need everything as percentages in everything that staff gives me from this day forward. Thank you. I want to bring up an issue that I see bubbling on the horizon, and I don't know what authority we have or not, and I'm going to make a public plea to the chair who serves on that org. Swimming pools in general cannot be put in along with the Nevada Resort Association's resort pools. There's a two different, completely different uses. Resort pools have alcohol served, which we know your frontal cortex then minimizes your ability to make executive functions. So we all know what that looks like. And they also have the cabanas, it's a party scene and listen. I love me some resort pools and a party scene. But that is so much different than training kids how to swim or let's say, an apartment pool or even a public pool, because the behavior is so different and so much more easier controlled when you take out the alcohol and you take out the money to be able to buy your best spot at the cabana to do people watching. So I just hope that our Health District, our manager, our chairman are advocating at that level. And if we, and I know, what authority do we have? Zero. But can we just please make sure that message gets through too? And I've also heard a lot of advocating for cutting hair and getting nails done and getting massages. And I would argue, those people should have been later because they don't know how to deal with public health. But people who do body decoration, vis a vis piercing, tattoos, all the other things that I don't even know, gauges, these people have been combating HIV and been on the alert for any bloodborne illness far before any hairstylist, nail person, or masseuse has done. So can we please also look at just good data rather than who can yell the loudest? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner Jung, I appreciate you bringing up the body art industry. I, I could not agree more. They have been dealing with bloodborne pathogens since day one and they've all told me that they assume. they assume regardless of what has been put on a piece of paper by their clients, that every single person has a bloodborne pathogen and they treat them as such, as do hospitals until they can do a blood test and confirm that they have no bloodborne pathogens. So I, I couldn't agree more. I think that they're prepared to open now. The only addition would be them wearing a mask, which none of them have kicked up a fuss over. So I, I'm hopeful that, that that industry at least will be opened. With respect, Mr. Solaro, maybe you could bring back to us, and this is something we talked about early on, what would it, and I don't know what percentage this is, of just home-based businesses, people just running strictly out of their house, you know, small businesses, that maybe we can give them a business license for a year for free. It's not going to mean that they, they don't have to apply for Nevada Department of Taxation or, you know, go through the state's silver flume process and, and get a state business license. But maybe in the unincorporated area, it would be nice to know what that percentage is of just small home-based businesses that have a residential address and look at, at what it would take to give them a, a business license at, at no cost. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Solaro, I think you got some direction here from staff, I mean, from the Commission in regards to what they'd like to see with enforcement. I don't have any of the other Commissioners signed in. I just look as we continue to move and obviously as we get more understanding about what those next steps look like, that we're flexible with individuals, but we're very clear and concise. The other thing I would look at as we, very similar to what Commissioner Jung said, as youth sports, our parks and our facilities and whatnot, many of those youth sports rely on our county parks and high school parks to participate and utilize those fields. So if we can have those discussions as youth sports come back online, I think that's important. So seeing nothing else, Mr. Solaro, would you like, do you have anything last? Do you'd like to add?
I do not. Thank you very much for the opportunity to, to explain to you what's, what's happening in our business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solaro. Appreciate you joining us this morning. All right, Mr. Manager, I think that concludes our presentations for the morning. That brings us to our consent agenda, sir.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, sorry, this is Dave Watzbierl. That was an action item at Item 7. Should call for public comment.
Thank you, sir. I will call for a public comment. I will go back and reopen public, Item 7. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
I have no emails.
Do we have any on Zoom? Seeing no public comment, we will close Item 7. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda that has been provided for us is prepared and ready for consideration. There, I don't believe there are any changes that need to be made this morning, are there, sir? To the consent agenda?
No, no.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Burke Bigler. I have a second from Commissioner Herman to approve the consent agenda as drafted. I, I will go ahead and, is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
I have received no emails.
No, is there any via Zoom? No, seeing no public comment, bring them back to board. I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung and Commissioner Hartung voting telephonically this morning. All right, Madam Vice Chair, do we have a block vote this morning?
Yes, sir. And I finally was able to get my, my mic turned on, so, okay. I would propose and make a motion that we put in a block vote, Items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17.
All right. I have a motion for a block vote of nine through 17.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
She said 10, so.
Oh.
Just to clarify, I think.
I'm sorry, I meant, I meant nine.
You meant nine?
Yes, nine also.
So, all right, so to clarify.
For the record, I meant nine also, so nine through 17.
Nine through 17, I have a motion for nine through 17 from the Chair. Do I have a second for any of those?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second from Commissioner Hartung. Any, Mr. Manager, do we have any discussion? Would any of the Commissioners like to take any out of, any of the, are okay with that block vote? Seeing no further discussion on that, Mr. Manager, will you read those items for me, please?
I can do that. So Item 9 is a recommendation to approve Amendment Number 3 to the Interlocal Cooperative Agreement Regarding the 2000 Parks Trails and Open Space Bonds Golden Eagle Regional Park Lily Parking Lot Between Washoe County and the City of Sparks. And to extend the term to June 30th, 2021, this is a Community Services item. Item Number 10 is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between the county and StanTech Consulting Services Provide Final Design Engineering Services for the Steamboat Lift Station Improvement Project Within the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Service Territory as Community Services. Item Number 11 is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsible bidder for the Sparks Justice Court HVAC Replacement Project. The staff recommends Simerson Construction LLC in the amount of $248,690,000. That's a Community Services project. Item 12 is a recommendation to authorize an increase in funds to, to the existing purchase orders for emergency agreements and construction contracts for the continued operation of the 2019 mitigation and response measures associated with both Lemon Valley Waste Water Treatment Plant for seepage bypass and backup pumping systems associated with the treatment plant and collection systems. That's 15, not to exceed $15,000, and for the continuation of the rental operation and maintenance of the pumping system around Swan Lake to mitigate flood and storm orders not to exceed $200,000. Item Number 13 is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services for the Huffaker Hills Effluent Storage Reservoir Phase 3 Linear Expansion Between Washoe County and New Fields in the amount of $451,865. That's a Community Services Initiative. Item 14 is a recommendation to authorize MWH Constructors and KG Walters Construction, a joint venture as a construction manager at risk for the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility 2020 Expansion Project and improve the inter-project owner CMAR Construction Agreement between Washoe County and MWH and KGW for guaranteed maximum price, number one, in the amount of $10,997,549. Item 15 is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services for construction management services between the county and HDR Engineering in support of the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility 2020 Expansion. That's for $5,305,577.27 as Community Services Project. Item Number 16 is a recommendation to amend the contract currently awarded for El Lior North America DBA Valley Services in support of the Washoe County Human Services Agency Senior Nutrition Program to add a program to provide meals to Our Place Women's Shelter. It's in the amount not to exceed $270,000. And that's a Human Services Agency Initiative. Item 17 is the recommendation to approve fiscal year 2021, 2020 and 2021 renewal of contracts and service agreements above $100,000 to be approved as a group by the Board of County Commissioners and authorization of the purchasing contracts manager to sign the contract renewals as they come due with the approval of District Attorney or Risk Management when necessary as follows. For the General Fund, Thompson Reuters not to exceed $300,000. Treasurer's Tax System Support, Rimini Street Inc. not to exceed $160,000. For SAP or SAP, ESSVR LLC not to exceed $110,000. These are all Technology Services Initiatives.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on any of the items?
I have not received any emails.
All right. Do we have any via Zoom? Okay. Commissioner Jung, you have a question?
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, I want to know what fiscal year budget these giant cash outlays are coming from firstly.
Most of these items are in the current fiscal year with the exception of Item 17, I believe.
Item 17 is for how much?
Item 17 is for $10,997.
Never mind, never mind. I'm in full support of this, but please be wildly aware that these are questions I'm going to ask every single meeting. Thank you.
Yes, and Commissioner Jung, may I comment that with the onset of the pandemic, we did set up the Financial Investment Review Committee, the FERC, meets weekly. It's to review all proposed spending requests of $10,000, I believe, or more for all the departments. And as a matter of policy, we do not, we're prioritizing completion of projects that would otherwise be suspended and therefore cost the county more money if we didn't go through with them. And of course, suspending any non-essential expenditures for the new fiscal year. So the things that you see on these lists are, have gone through that review process.
That is great to know. Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I should have known that, but you know, unlike Ronald Reagan, I trust, but I always verify. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions by the Commissioners about the?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hartung.
I just wanted to make a comment and thank the Commission for supporting the updated agreement with the City of Sparks. The Golden Eagle Regional Park is just loved by so many people and utilized by the entire region, and so I'm, I'm thankful for that. Thank you.
All right. So I have a motion by Vice Chair Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Hartung to approve the block vote as posted through of Items 9 through 17. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner Jung voting in the affirmative via telephone. All right, we are now on to our next item and that would be, we have now pulled Items 18 and Items 19. But Items 19 is on the agenda as a public hearing, so we'll have to open the public hearing today if there is any, so I'll open the, the public hearing for Item 19 to see if there's any public comment. We'll take that public comment.
I'm not aware of any emails, Mr. Chair.
All right, and do we have any public comments? So what we'll do is now we'll close 19 without any discussion. This item will be coming back for a second reading and impossible adoption in June, at a next June meeting after there are some clarifications and will be posted for a public hearing then. With that, Mr. Manager, we are on to Item 20, sir.
Item 20 is public hearing on a master plan amendment, case number WMPA 8, I'm sorry, 20-0002. This is Woodland Village to adopt an amendment to the Cold Springs Area Plan. A component of the Washoe County Master Plan to change the master plan designation on 71% of a plus or minus 4.2 acre parcel, which is APN 556-390-05, the suburban residential from suburban residential to commercial with 29% or 1.2 acres currently SR to remain SR. Proposal if approved would result in a 71%, in 71% of the parcel being designated commercial and the remaining 29% designated suburban residential for owners WVC Recreation LLC. If adopted, the master plan amendment will take effect after the determination of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. And Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA 20-0002, Woodland Village to adopt, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment and a favorable conformance review by the regional planning authorities. An amendment to the Cold Springs Regulatory Zone Map, a component of the Cold Springs Area Plan to change the regulatory zone on 71% of a plus or minus 4.2 acre parcel, which is APN 556-390-05, from public and semi-public facilities to neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood, yes. The remaining 7, 29%, 1.2 acres of the parcel, which has a zoning designation of PSP, will keep the PSP designation for owners WVC Recreation LLC and, if approved, authorize the Chair to sign the resolutions to the, to that effect, Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, this is a, this is a master plan amendment, an ordinance. No, it's not an ordinance, I'm sorry. This is just, this is, this is just a master plan amendment number. There is no number for this. All right, so do we have staff? Does any of the Commissioners have any discussion that they need any clarification from staff in regards to this? Commissioner? Commissioner Hartung?
This is really a pedestrian item. It was already approved by the, the Washoe County Planning Commission. This is, this is very, this is just, it has to come through us before it can go to the Regional Planning Commission for a conformance review. And so this is, again, this is a very pedestrian type of a thing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung, I appreciate that. And I, for the record, this, this was brought to the Commission District 5 Cab, I believe, in Cold Springs, and also passed our Planning Commission, both, both bodies unanimously. And as Commissioner Hartung, very pedestrian. We do have a voicemail, we do have public comment. So with that, Madam Clerk, will you play a public comment for us, please?
Hi, this is Dan Cox, and I am calling in regards to the Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA 20-0002, Woodland Village. That is taking place at 10:00 AM on Tuesday morning. I want to offer a big no to their plan. They need to leave that, that area alone for commercial, for them to do whatever they want to. So a big no on that. Thank you.
All right. Are there any further public comment via joining us via Zoom?
Julie Olander's on, if you have questions.
No, I see we don't have any. Thank you. All right, seeing no further public comment, we'll close public comment and close, and bring it back to the board to finalize this public hearing. At this time, I am looking for a motion and it is, I need both a allowance for the Master Plan Amendment case and also the RZA case. So with that, looking for a motion.
I move, Mr. Chairman, on both accounts. Hartung?
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Hartung, second by Vice Chair Burke Bigler. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen for those here in the chambers.
I neglected to mark Commissioner Jung as affirmative.
Yes. Commissioner Jung, can you just affirm for me that you were an aye, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Madam Clerk. I am, I am an aye. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have, the motion does carry unanimously with Commissioner Jung and Commissioner Hartung voting telephonically in the affirmative. All right, that concludes our public hearings. We'll close the public hearings. We are on to Item 21. Mr. Manager, is there any need for closed public session today?
No, sir.
All right, seeing no need for that, we will close that item and we are down to our final public comment. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment? Has signed in during the meeting.
We have several. First up is a voicemail from Ann Marie Grant.
Okay. Okay.
County Commissioners Meeting, 5/26/2020, Agenda Item 22, Anne Marie Grant for the record. Sister of Thomas Purdy hogtied by Reno Police Officer Christopher A. Good, David M. Tomlin, and Jorge A. Parisio. He was then asphyxiated to death by Washoe deputies. Timothy Sanger, Brendan Glenn, Paul Hubbell, under the direction of Sergeant Wayne Wester, and while still hogtied 40 minutes later. I couldn't help but notice the sheriff's latest tweets were photos taken inside the detention unit at PA. Two out of 10 of the detention deputies were wearing face masks. Is face mask for deputies not part of Sheriff Balaam's COVID-19 prevention measure? I mean, surely they aren't going to let the inmates wear masks themselves, so therefore the deputy should be mandated to have their masks on at all times. I also want to mention the agenda from last week. It would have been nice if the item let the public know Balaam would be presenting his report mandated by NRS 211.030 regarding the jail death. The item said it was for COVID-19 update only. I'd also like to mention the officer involved shootings again, and there are many families who still have zero answers. I know a lot of you can't imagine it would ever happen to someone you love. I didn't think it would either, but the reality is, is it could happen to anyone's loved one. So let's work on transparency and accountability from elected officials, including yourselves, the DA, and the mayor. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Chair, is an email from Rosine Venna. Dear Commissioners, thank you for your service to our community. I am emailing to request that you make masks mandated for everyone in all public establishments such as retail stores, grocery stores, beauty/nail salons, gyms, dance schools, et cetera. For the safety of our community, masks should not be an elective but a requirement. Thank you again for all your due. Stay safe. Sincerely, Rosine Venna, Artistic Director, Sierra Nevada Ballet.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And we have one more voicemail from Daniel Purdy.
Thank you. Daniel Purdy for the record, brother of Thomas Purdy murdered by Reno Police Department Washoe County deputies on 10/4/2015. I was hoping perhaps some community members who have his lost loved ones through the police may get some assistance from the county commissioner in their efforts to view the body cam footage of their loved ones being shot and killed by your local law enforcement agencies.
All right.
Since I've lost my brother, I just want to let you guys know. I don't see any changes happening. I just see you guys being nothing but irresponsible. I hope that you can start to take your job seriously as elected officials.
All right. Well, Mr. Purdy's voicemail will be placed on the record for the meeting. And then we, Miss Madam Clerk, we have.
We have one final email from Rhonda Tysor. It's referenced authorizing the Incline Village Citizen Advisory Boards to address all issues of importance to the IVCB community. Dear Commissioners, thank you for authorizing the Incline Village Crystal Bay Citizen Advisory Board to address issues of importance to the community beyond those currently allowed. As mentioned in my November 2019 request, NRS 269.0242 specifically allows all matters of interest to the town and its residents to be discussed at cab meetings. The commissioner's decision to limit issues is in contradiction to both the spirit and the intent of the law. NRS 269.0242, number six, says the advisory council shall assist the Board of County Commissioners in governing the town by acting as liaison between the residents of the town and the board. The advisory council and the board shall cooperate to inform each other of all matters of interest to the town and its residents. The advisory council shall not expend or contract any money, any town money for any purpose. Commissioner Burke Bigler and Commissioner Jung agreed to make this change in November 2019, and Commissioner Burke Bigler reiterated her intention to put the item on the meeting agenda in June, in June. I noticed that the June 9th meeting has now been canceled. Perhaps you can address this in your meeting May 26. Thank you. Sincerely, Rhonda Tysor, Incline Village resident.
And Ms. Tysor's email will be placed on the record for public comment.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment via Zoom this morning?
No.
All right. This afternoon, 20, we are 20 minutes into the afternoon, folks, ladies and gentlemen. All right, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board for our final commissioners and county managers announcement. Mr. Manager, do you have anything final?
I do. I just, as a clarification, Mr. Chair, for Commissioner Jung, gaming taxes are 0.54% of the Washoe County General Fund budget.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. I think it's prudent, commissioners, that we bring back an item from Waste Management and just look at the franchise agreement and have that conversation. I don't know how else we deal with this at this point. Unfortunately, citizens of Washoe County have little to no other option to eke the emptying of their trash other than to do it themselves. So I think, I think we're just going to have to have this conversation. And then one other thing, perhaps Waste Management can think about putting dumpsters in our communities. I know that there are a number of places where people would clean up some of the illegal dumping if dumpsters were made available by Waste Management. So maybe that's something that they can demonstrate community good faith in. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jung, any final comments?
Sorry. Thank you. Yes, I would like also at our next meeting to have a presentation and discussion about this FERC that the manager replied to me about spending money. I want to know the makeup of the body, what are the decision points, et cetera, because while I do want things fully vetted, I do believe that this commission, and this commission only, makes those decisions. So that needs to be fully vetted, and I want to see who's on that and what their, what their charge order is. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything final? Commissioner Burke Bigler? I have just two, two things that I'd like to point out. One, that was stated in the, in public comment churches and places of religion and worship have been submitted by the LEAP. They were deemed essential businesses by, by the current, by the presidential administration and have been submitted to the governor's office for recommendation in regards to those. So those should be hopefully coming. We will hear more about that this afternoon, once again, governor's press conference this evening. Mr. Manager, I would like to put in and on the next agenda with you and Assistant County Manager, Mr. Solero, bringing back the discussion of Reindeer Lodge. Reindeer Lodge is a property owned on Mount Rose Highway that has been half demolished. It has been tried to be purchased a number of times. It is in a state where the community is, it is what I would consider a nuisance. So I would like to have that property owner brought here and have that discussion in front of this commission because it is the, I would like to consider it a public nuisance. It is a health hazard that has not been rectified or taken care of. When windstorms that we saw just last weekend go whistling through off that mountain at 80 to 100 miles an hour, I would not like to be a neighbor that has to suffer from insulation or anything from that demolition not being taken care of. So I would like to have that on our next agenda or as soon as possible. And then finally, want to wish my six-year-old son a happy birthday. Yesterday was his sixth birthday that he got to enjoy during the COVID and not have a birthday party and got to spend it with me, but I told him I would tell him happy birthday on the county commission today. So happy birthday, Mason. Love you. And we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Talk to you. Have a wonderful day. Enjoy your Tuesday. Bye-bye.